Okay, good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For attendance this evening, we have Marty Zatarian to my left, Robert Fogg to my right. My name is Martina Witz. I'll be chairing the meeting. Doug Bogdan is absent this evening due to a medical reason. Marty, I'm officially appointing you as a voting member. So we have the three of us, so we do have a quorum. Also in attendance are Kathy Eddy, the administration administrator. Do any board members have any conflicts with any of the issues we'll be discussing this evening?
No.
Okay. Are not all here, so we don't have three people that can vote on that, so we'll table that to the next. So at this time, I'd like to call the public hearing portion of the meeting to order at 6:16. This is a public hearing this evening at request from Tarpon Towers, Two LLC, and Verizon Wireless for a site plan review to construct a 120-foot wireless telecommunications facility and associated improvements on land owned by Scott and Kendra Kimball located at 26 Wilderness Way, map lot R07-045 in the rural zoning district. Before we get started, there are two correspondence that we received after the last meeting. I've been asked to read them into the record. Let me see. What I will offer is, are the authors of the, one of the letters in the audience, would they like to read their letter into the record themselves? Are they here? They're not here. Where is that letter? I thought I must have touched it three times.
You have your memo.
Yep, I'm sorry.
From back.
From to back. This was just signed by Concerned Citizens of Naples, so I don't know who it is, so I'll read this into the record. "To the Town of Naples and the Planning Board Members, this letter regarding the potential cellphone tower being installed on Wilderness Way off of State Park Road. There are numerous neighbors concerned about the proximity of the cellphone tower to their houses. There are roughly 20 houses that are within 1,640 feet from the tower, the closest being about 500 feet. Five of these homes on the parcel of land itself are anywhere from 400 to 1,000 feet from the proposed tower location. Multiple homes in this described area are home to children who may be greatly affected by the RF EMF emitted from the towers. Our neighboring state, New Hampshire, has plans in the works, backed by science and research, not to allow any cellphone tower within 1,640 feet from any residents. FCC regulations, although they deem current, are based on research from 1996, pre-G, 3G, 4G, 5G. Our biggest concern is the radiation that this tower will emit. At the end of the day, we are all guinea pigs, and with all this new technology, this is becoming a huge concern nationwide. Communities have fought cellphone companies trying to put towers on the schools for their kids where their kids attend. Fire stations have closed relocated away from cellphone towers because the tower was emitting such a tight frequency, it was raising havoc on their internal communication system with the fire barn." These are just a few examples of what towns have encountered with cellphone towers. Will Tarpon Towers, Verizon be doing annual RF EMF measurements? Will they be doing measurements each time they allow another carrier to attach to the tower? Naples is the home of the historic Sangal Lock. People travel long distances to step back in time and enjoy the simplicity of our past. While we hope that locks will always be a part of Naples, it would be a tragedy to have a cellphone tower in the natural landscape of the lock. We as nearby residents recommend that the planning board abide by the current ordinance on what is allowed on that property, i.e. height limits of 50 feet. This potential tower will also impact the abundance of wildlife within the Sebago Lake State Park and surrounding areas. Cellphone towers have also been researched concerning the effects on wildlife. Examples of the effects are disturbing breeding grounds, migration patterns in ecosystems, and increased risk of fires. We are waiting on a more specific report for our area for Maine Inland Fisheries and Wildlife located at the Gray Maine office. Another but smaller concern that neighbors have is the decrease in property values. There have been some studies done that show up to a 20% decrease in property value if a cell tower is within 2,000 feet from a home. That being said, most of the houses on the Sangal River fall into that category. The federal and state government has given our town the right to make our town, our own choices on cellphone towers here. We are neighbors and concerned community want you to truly think long and hard and do your due diligence and research before passing the cellphone tower. Please ask yourselves this one question, would you want a cell tower near your house to put your family's health at risk? We as a nation have enough problems between the food we eat and the PFAS we consume daily, consume on a daily basis. Please don't give us another reason to decrease the life expectancy of the human race. Citizens should have the ability to choose whether they are exposed to and the duration of exposure, not the other way around. Don't put us at risk 24 hours a day. Most people can have high-speed internet in their homes, which can help increase the reliability of cellphones or phone calls, texts, and internet. Unlike a cellphone tower, the high-speed internet is a choice and can be turned off when wanted. Cellphone companies can also provide for a small fee, people with cellphone signal boosters that can be installed in their home. Please continue to ask the important questions to the tower team and Verizon and continue being diligent in doing your research. And as I said, it was Concerned Citizens of Naples signed it, so I don't know who exactly. In response to that correspondence, we also received one from the applicant. I would, Mark, do you want to read that into the record, or do you want me to read it?
You're doing a great job.
Okay. Super. So this is an email received February 3rd from Nixon P. Lafferty. Nixon P. Lafferty, that's the firm, law firm that, or the, what is the, I'm sorry, I just want to characterize the letter.
That's the law firm that represents Tarpon Towers and Verizon Wireless.
Thank you. Dear Members of the Planning Board, prior to the commencement of the Planning Board hearing on January 7th, 2025, town staff provided Tarpon Towers, Third LLC, the applicant representatives with an updated letter from a concerned citizen of Naples, the letter. Below please find the applicant's response to the letter. The primary concerns set forth in the letter are in connection with radiation emitted from the proposed project and alleged health effects related thereto. As set forth in greater detail in Exhibit C of the applicant's initial application, applicable legal standards, and first supplemental application, the Telecommunications Act of 1996 provides that no local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of the radio frequency emissions to the extent that such facilities comply with the Federal Communications Commission's regulations concerning such emissions. This prohibition extends to the, consents to the consideration of RF-related health concerns by local governments, where it is demonstrated that a proposed facility's RF emissions are within the guidelines set forth by the FCC. As stated by the applicant's representatives via verbal testimony during the prior planning board hearings, the calculated radio frequency emissions report attached to the initial application as Exhibit O and the supplemental RF letter attached to the first supplemental application as Exhibit R demonstrate the proposed project's compliance with the maximum permissible exposure limit set forth by the Federal Communications Commission. Therefore, health and environmental effects of the proposed wireless communication facility are the jurisdiction of the FCC, and the planning board cannot consider the health and environmental effects of the project's RF emissions when making its decision. The letter also references a New Hampshire House bill known as HB 1644, which was originally introduced in 2021, but has never been passed into law. This proposed New Hampshire legislation is not applicable to the town or germane to this application. Even if Maine had similar legislation pending, such legislation would be in direct conflict with the above referenced existing and enforceable federal law governing the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions in connection with the proposed project. Lastly, the letter expresses another smaller concern related to an alleged decrease in property values. As set forth above, property value claims related to environmental effects of radio frequency emissions cannot be considered by the planning board. The proposed project will be FCC licensed and will meet FCC requirements as demonstrated in the calculated radio frequency emissions report. Further, numerous appraisals and surveys prepared during the build-out of the wireless networks across the United States in the past two decades has shown consistently that facilities, such as the one in this case, have no measurable impact on the values of surrounding properties. In fact, such facilities can have a positive effect on local property values. They increase the local tax base without creating additional demand for local services. They also help attract businesses and jobs in sectors that increasingly rely on wireless capabilities. In fact, a recent survey found that reliable wireless telecommunications service is of major importance to home buyers, more important to some than schools when looking for a home. See Root Metrics and Money, June 2, 2015. And among millennials, 83% said cell service was the most important factor in purchasing a home. In support of the conclusion that the facility will not diminish surrounding property values, please see the attached article from the Probate and Property magazine attached here to Schedule 1. The service provided by the applicant's proposed facility will benefit the people and businesses in and around the Town of Naples with improved wireless services that are as good as or better than other areas in Verizon's network, including improved reliability and access to E911 and emergency services, such as police and fire who serve the area. This is particularly important when traditional landline phones are inaccessible or not working, which is often the case for stranded motorists or even a storm, or a severe storm, or the results of other types of emergencies. Law enforcement agents, neighborhood watch programs, and individuals use Verizon's wireless network in emergency situations to improve emergency service with reduced notification times, improved response times, improved knowledge for emergency response teams, and an increased number of life-saving outcomes. Finally, should other wireless carriers' network fail, the Verizon Wireless network is available to all users for emergency calls and text messages. As a result, this facility will provide a net positive impact on the health, safety, and general welfare of the area. We respectfully request that this letter, together with the applicant's initial application and first supplemental application, be placed on the agenda for February 4th, 2025, Planning Board Hearing. In the meantime, should you have any questions or require additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Okay. I will not read the entire article that was attached, but if you all would like to have access to that, I'm sure that Kathy could make that available to you. So, what we will do now is open it up, first of all, would the applicant like to, again in any way, give a brief synopsis of the project before the public makes any comments or asks questions?
This is our third time here now, I'm sure you're sick of seeing me. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Also, tonight we have Ken Curley from Tarpon Towers and Martin Levin, who's the radio frequency engineer from C Squared. You know, we respect the folks that came here today with their opinions. We hope we've provided you enough information to approve our application. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to make a comment or ask a question, I would ask that you come to the podium. There are significant number of people here, so if you could limit your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. If you find that you have the exact same thing to say that someone else said, please do still come up and just say "I agree" or whatever with the previous person rather than repeat everything. And if you would ask the questions through me, the board, the chair, and then we'll get the answers from the applicant directly if we can't answer them. So if anyone would like to come up, just identify yourself.
Hello.
Hi.
Mike Griffin. You got a couple of questions about aesthetics. Are you guys going to do anything with that eyesore in my yard?
Sir?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you could just address the questions to us, and then we'll give the applicant an opportunity.
Is there any aesthetics that are going to be required on that tower so that I don't have this offensive-looking thing in my backyard? The other question is, I'm at a higher elevation than you, sorry, I'm at a higher elevation, so I am much closer than anybody to this tower. So aesthetics is kind of a thing that I've been wanting to ask, and I also want to know, what are they putting in for backup generators? Are they diesel? Are they propane? Are they going to come on at all hours of the night, especially when we're camping out at the state park? Are we going to hear that? How are they going to address noise? And why is this site now being chosen? Why is there another site that isn't working? Maybe they can answer that.
So many of those questions were answered in the three times that they came to the board, but we have the documentation for that, but if that's all the questions you have, I think I'll give the applicant a chance to answer the questions.
Should I sit, or should I stand?
Make yourself comfortable.
I'd better begin an effective elevation of the height of that to the elevation of my property.
Would it be helpful if you, have you ever seen, did you look at the plans online?
Yes.
Okay. So could you quickly just point to where your house is in relation to the?
The property itself. I'm at a much higher elevation than the base of that tower, so it's 126-foot tower. What is the distance from my property?
What I'm saying is, we don't know where your property is, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm directly adjacent to it. I am the closest.
You should point to it. You can find it here. I believe, so, yeah, 07, was 0746?
Yeah.
Yeah, 0746.
0746.
That was his property. Yeah, Michael. Mark, can you see which one he's talking about?
Okay, so the subject parcel is a little, just shy of 37 acres. It's densely populated. There is a dense buffer all the way around it, buffering the tower as much as reasonably possible, given the tree foliage in this area. The pole has to be a certain height in order to effectively transmit the cell signal to the other towers. Martin can discuss that, as he has previously, if you like that. It will not be lit. It'll be, from wrong, a dull gray color to blend into the sky, to the gray sky. It'll be 715 feet from the commenter's property line. The ground elevation of the center of the pole will be 424 feet and 9 inches. I don't have a ground elevation of the gentleman's property 715 feet away. We meet all the setbacks, we meet all the distance requirements from property lines. We located it where we could, given the existing wetlands on the property that we're having to deal with, and we're trying to limit cutting down any trees, you know, so we can preserve that. I'm not sure if Ken, you have anything else to comment says?
It's also the generator, it'll be a diesel generator. The purpose of the generator is to, when there's emergency and power is out, and there's not commercial power to the site, then the generator will run to energize the tower. And it's only limited to the time where there's going to be no power. So if you don't have power at your house, or the surrounding properties in the area without power, most likely that tower doesn't have power, and will not be able to transmit the signal or any of the equipment that are on the asset. So the generator itself will only run when required, and then once a week, there will be a test, correct? It'll run for about five minutes, and we can pick which day of the week and what time of the day that the generator will energize, and will test itself. Are there any other questions that you asked that have not been answered yet?
What are you going to do for aesthetics?
Prosthetics?
Put some branches on that, or are you going to hide those microphones?
So as far as the tower itself, it's going to be galvanized steel.
Yep.
All right? We have no intention of putting branches on the tower. Personally, I think the branches don't add value to a tower. We build a lot of towers all throughout the North Country, throughout New England, throughout state New York. There are different municipalities that require branching. The issue with branching is it doesn't also allow the antennas to be placed at a correct height, and then when you're adding more carriers on there, and you're adding more branches, you're pulling branches off, and at the end, as over time, the branches start to degrade, and it doesn't look good. And if you have emergency management, and you have other municipalities that want to go on the tower, usually it prevents them from going on towers that have branching on it because of the type of antenna that they use.
So that's a money issue with you?
It's not a money issue, it's an aesthetic issue. Personally, over time, the towers that look like fake trees don't look as good as the tower that goes into.
No, but you change them, you change out the leaves, the branches.
The branches. You can continue to change, but it affects the performance and the ability to put additional equipment on the tower. So if you have another carrier that comes to co-locate or to install on that tower, you may need another tower, because there won't be enough room to go on this tower because you have the branching taking up the space of it. So instead of having one tower that could have multiple tenants on it, you're going to have a tower that's going to have less, and then there's going to be another tower, another company are going to sit here and make the argument that they can't install on that tower.
So this also opens a door for another tower?
No, this?
No, no, if in the future, this could open the door for another tower.
Any site that is out there depends on the topography and the coverage. By adding this site here, it's going to broadcast and provide coverage, and Martin can speak to the, directly where the coverage is going to be. Each individual carrier has different coverage objectives. For this tower here, you may not need another tower, because this is providing coverage to meet a gap that the carrier doesn't have service that they're currently providing. So necessarily, you may not need another site down the road, because this site is a site that provides that coverage gap. And Martin can speak to that directly, or if you have any questions, we can take a look at the RF map, and you can see the exact spaces where this tower is going to supplement.
But I would find that helpful, just to remind people of that, because I do recall from the first meeting that we had on this.
Mark, can you please, can you set that up so everyone can take?
Yeah, the first meeting that we had on this, you did a good job in explaining why that particular site was chosen, and I think that was one of your questions, why was that site chosen? And I think this diagram explains.
I have a cell site in PewDieMaws.
Okay.
And the loudest thing there is the air conditioners. They got air conditioners on all these units, and they all run at once. I got six carriers. So I'm in an industrial business inside a shop, and with the door closed, I can hear every one of their air conditioners all day long. So that's another issue, that we're going to have noise that's constant. Your air conditioning units on your cell pods is about 96 to 100 decibels, constant. All summer long, they're all running, constant.
Look, if you don't mind asking, do you have a shelter that's there?
Yes.
Okay, there's no shelter going here, these are cabinets. The technology has changed. Previous Verizon used to have large shelters, and those shelters, they'd have to be conditioned like a space. These right here, and this is in the drawings for everyone that's been submitting, you've got a battery cabinet that's 37 by 36, and a main equipment cabinet that's the same exact size. That's what the equipment is going to be installed in.
No fans in any of those transformers?
Well, there's fans in there to keep cooling, but it's the same type of fans you'd have on a computer, exactly. So they're going to be cooling a CPU in the battery units, but you're not having a big commercial air conditioning unit that is going to be running.
No, but what's the CFM on the fans and the transformers? I can hear them inside of a building.
We would be glad to provide that data, because I don't have that data, and if we have to get that from the carriers, we can provide.
Another issue is, we had a diesel generator there. It leaked 500 gallons into an environmentally sensitive area. You guys got sued, and they had to put in propane.
Well, to be clear, we did not be sued. Tarpon Towers was not sued, we don't, it's not.
No, no, I'm sorry, not Verizon.
Okay.
They weren't supposed to put the diesel generator in an environmentally sensitive area, Goldenbrook. And they had a leak in their pebble tank, 500 gallons of diesel, huge expense, but they made them go to propane because propane is safer than the diesel. You guys, you're the ones with the restrictions. And there is no environmental impact study done in that whole area, correct? They don't need to have an environmental impact study done for this. Is that correct?
The project needs to comply with all the state and local laws and regulations, which would include an NEPA filing?
I'm sorry?
An environmental impact study, right? So we're right back here if we find out that there's environmental concerns in connection with the project, right? So we just, we can't go for that until we know where it's going to be on the lot.
So the, are there any of his questions in case?
On another note, I got a phone call yesterday from a local real estate developer. It told me my property value dropped 28%. Do you want to sell it for less than it's assessed at? And I got a letter from local realtors that want to buy the property for less than it is estimated because of the tower. I was told it was 28% drop in my property value, not everybody, me, because of my location to the tower. Makes it undesirable, and that cell phone site is also going to be considered a hazardous area.
I don't mean to challenge you, but you had a realtor that sent you a letter that offered to buy a property that's losing value?
Yeah, for less than it's worth.
Okay.
Because now they could probably develop it for industrial or commercial.
Well, if it's not zoned to be industrial or commercial, then it's not going to be.
It's a rural zone. So I think we're kind of off track here.
No, I was just saying, he said it doesn't drop your property value. Within 1,000 feet, it clearly drops your value.
But we don't have any way to determine that.
Yeah.
We do, we do. It's called a real estate appraisal.
I understand your concern. Our ordinances don't ask us to take into consideration somebody's property.
Then can I get a tax abatement on my property value?
Whatever process that is, I don't.
You don't do abatements in the Town of Naples?
The Town of Naples assessor. Not this board, no.
Planning board. That's something that we're all going to do because of the property value drop. Makes it an undesirable location, and legally, it is considered a hazardous zone once they put this in. It'll always be a hazardous zone. And are you bringing in three-phase power to run this unit?
Take a look at the drawings.
Because if they don't bring in three-phase power, then they're going to be running that generator, especially under peak conditions. And everybody knows that when the cellphone company doesn't want the tower anymore, they just walk away from it.
That's not true.
Well, sir, yeah.
What's happening over arrowhead right?
Let's just address the questions and not have a conversation between the two of you. So you're probably not talking, so they can't just leave the tower, that's part of the plan, and what we've been asking is that they have to decommission it, there's a decommissioning plan at their expense when the tower's no longer used.
And to confirm, will you provide a bond?
We have a bond as well, right?
Yes, yes.
We gave you the estimate there.
Yeah, it's 32,000 something.
How much?
32,000.
So you just leave the pole and take down all your ground?
No, we take down everything. The bond is there in the event that Verizon and we go bankrupt, and.
No, you just, we sold out. I've watched six carriers get bought out.
Well, Verizon is not going anywhere anytime soon, the largest carrier in the United States. But in the event that happens, let's say Verizon goes bankrupt, we go bankrupt, the bond is there, so the town has the money to remove the tower, remove all the equipment, and put, and bring everything back to as it was in that area before the tower was up. And that's what the bond is, that's the purpose of the bond.
What happened at Thompson's site?
I don't know Thompson's site, that has nothing to do with this project.
Sir, we can't address other sites at this point.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just asking for that need, another site closed. Why did it close?
I don't, that's outside the scope of what we're doing, and that's.
Yeah, it's not our site, I don't.
It's American, I think that's American.
Yes, which, if it is American tower, that would be a different tower company. So they would be entirely responsible for their tower and the carriers that are on that. Just completely separate asset, business, has nothing to do with us.
Did you want to explain why that site was chosen? I think that was one of your questions.
Yes.
Martin Levin, C Squared Systems, on behalf of Verizon. This clock picks the current situation in terms of. This plot takes the current situation in terms of coverage. We have, green is the highest level of coverage, which is in building. Gold is in vehicle coverage, and gray is basically outdoor, away from everything coverage, voice. This is the current situation. You can see there's scattered outdoor coverage mainly in this area. There's no in-building or in-vehicle coverage. The symbols, that's the symbol for the post site. These, Sabego site, Casco, Naples 2, Casco 3, those are the existing sites getting coverage and some coverage coming up.
Is Naples 5 the proposed site?
Sorry?
Naples 5, is that the proposed site?
Oh, in the south, Naples S.
I'm sorry, is that the proposed site or is that an existing?
The blue one is proposed. And this is the existing coverage for Verizon. There's a scale of miles there. With the... And this much yards here. This is two miles, so that's, the coverage is about two miles across at the in-building level. We've got a lot of in-vehicle coverage and closed up most of the gaps where there wasn't even outdoor coverage.
It's helping Casco, not Naples?
Some of the signals, we're gonna signal to know where the town border is and put the sites up. Naples is currently getting coverage from over here, the Sabego site, some from the Casco site over here. So there's always a situation where the site one town serves part of another town. Everyone new one that goes up does the same thing. It just benefits everyone.
How many? We're running at four. You guys proposed four.
There's gonna be currently one carrier, Verizon, but you could have up to four. We designed the tower strong enough to give that to four carriers.
If an additional carrier goes on the pole, then they need to come to us again.
Yeah.
They can't just put additional.
Full RF evaluation has to be done at that point in time.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a question they'd like to come up to the podium? No, no other questions from anybody? Yeah, sir.
My name's Garzoo. I'm a neighbor. So a few weeks ago, Mr. Tilson said that the closest house was 1,000 feet away from the tower. Where did you come up with that number?
I'm assuming you're asking this because maybe you're closer than 1,000 feet?
Yep, and we did write that letter that you read earlier.
Could you tell us where on the map you are?
Yep.
So we know what we're talking about.
So we're wilderness way on Bear Claw Road. I own 22 acres, this whole area. So let's see, Hart Road's here, and the town we're working here. And then my main concern is, there's people that live in this trailer, the trailers here, about 500 feet away, 200 feet away. So I'm just gonna...
They're on the property of the owner.
They are.
Yes.
They're 200 feet away. So I just would like to know where you came up with that number.
So this property line here, 715 feet, and you're over here?
I'm over here, yeah.
So you are over...
I am about 1,400 feet away from my house, and then I have a garage, and then we have... Maybe someday we'll move closer to the tower, but it's a big concern. So I just wanted to ask them where they came up with that 1,000 foot.
So your question is, how did they come up with the saying that a house is no closer than 1,000 feet? Is that your question?
Yep.
Do you have a response for that?
I'm not sure who said that.
No, no, Mr. Tilson did. A gentleman who was here on November 17th.
I think his name is Mr. Slotmeyer. He's from Tilson Engineering.
Oh, I don't know. I think it's Mr. Tilson.
Well, he's not here today.
I can't say what he said or what he didn't say. All I know is per sheet Z1, we're at least over 715 feet away from the property line of Mr. Garzoo. We haven't run figures from his home because that isn't required under your ordinance. We meet all the setbacks. The closest property line is the Kimbells, which is our landlord, and that's why we positioned the pole in that configuration to alleviate having to get any relief from dimensional requirements. So I'm not sure what Mr. Slotmeyer said in connection with how far away the residence was or wasn't. All I know is per sheet Z1, you can see as well as I what the dimensions are from the property lines.
Do you know if there are trailers really close by? I mean, do we have that quantified distance where those trailers are?
You mean on the landowner's site?
Down on the landowner's site.
But besides knowing that there are trailers on the site, I don't have any other information to provide on the dimensions. But there's nothing in the... I was just using the word "fall zone." There's certainly nothing in that area.
Occupied trailers that are maybe 200 feet away from the proposed site. That's very close.
On our landowner's site, on the land?
Yes, on the landowner's site.
So that's, I would say that that's his, that's his choice.
I guess so.
That's the landowner's choice, and that's why we're here. It's the landowner's choice to lease his land.
Another comment was, I think we should do a balloon test to see where this is gonna, how high it's gonna look or what it's gonna look like before it's built. I know other towns have done that. They have a helium, a balloon and a helium, and send it up, see what it looks like. I think we should definitely, definitely do that. Do they carry liability insurance for health effects? So 30 years from now, I have health problems because of this tower, and how do they go about that? So like any business has liability insurance. So I guess you have to answer that.
I think our letter in our prior time up here, we've talked about the health effects in great detail. I don't know, I mean, liability insurance, I'm sure you carry some, but nothing having to do with things that's governed by the FCC emission standards.
I'll keep it short and simple. I just, I don't think this is a good spot for a cell phone tower. So I hope you guys can think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll call this portion of the public hearing to close for this. At this point, I would ask the other board members if you feel like we have other information Information to...
Well, I certainly would be interested to know the distance of the trailers to the tower. The existing trailers are there?
When you say health concerns, are...
Power frequency, right? Just would like to understand quantified what the exposure is for people that are within the 473-foot window that was identified as the...
And unclear what you want to know in connection with our own landowner's property.
That are closed?
I don't know that. Do you know?
Disoccupied.
Who's living there?
Again, that would be my only issue, is just what is that quantified distance? What is that today? And certainly the question of the noise, audio noise that came out from the cooling? I just, again, quantified numbers, what are the decibel levels? Just so that we understand what we're getting ourselves into. These are issues that are raised by the public. We should at least have the information for these folks.
Right, so I'm not sure how to answer the question about what the health effects would be for the potential occupants or the trailers on our landowner's site, but it's, the landers... We're meeting your dimensional requirements for setbacks. If there was a fall zone requirement, we've met that. So trying to do our best, but you know, it's our third time here.
Right, you've answered every question, just asking a few more. And you know, this is something that was raised as an acoustics question.
We don't have that information, to be honest with you. We don't know if the trailers can be moved. We don't know if he's planning on moving them in the future, closer or further away. It's under his discretion to move his own personal property, so I'm not really sure the distance of the trailers is germane to the application, you know?
Could I just ask, I mean, to this point, so on this document that you have provided for us, right? So would this one not then tell us what the percentage of the MPE results are at 400 feet? If I'm reading this correctly, this information is already here?
Yeah, it's to say that we meet the FCC's highest emissions requirements. And you know, if you're asking me to say, well, the what-ifs of, what if they move a trailer closer or further away? I'm not prepared to answer those questions, quite honestly. In connection with the noise, you know, sometimes we get these questions if we're right up against a residential area and we have a generator, right? Here, we don't have those issues. We're 715 feet away. It's a densely populated, densely treed area, so we wouldn't expect them to have those concerns on the generator if they're gonna run for 10 minutes a week, and we can, they can choose the times when they run. If the generator runs because the power's out, well, guess what? Everyone else's generator is also running, so you're gonna hear it all over, you know? So this is not a residential subdivision. It's a very large lot. It's never a perfect location, but it's pretty darn good to fit our coverage and needs, and we're not gonna have to cut down a bunch of trees. So we hope you consider that, you know, you can still vote tonight without having, seeking additional information that we have not provided for the past three hearings.
No, I'm not concerned about the generator portion of it. It's more the 24/7 noise of the cooling fans. I know we talked about it by your quantified numbers, you know, what that acoustics output we did.
Well, a member of the public indicated it compared cooling fans to a site that is, we have zero information on, okay? But we know that these sites are very quiet, and they run under a decibel where no one's gonna be able to hear them.
You have the quantified number with that?
We can provide a quantified number.
If you could, that's all I have.
Yeah, we can provide a quantified number as I had told, said earlier, but I think to Mark's point, we have done everything within the requirements and the guidelines of the town as required for the application. We can provide additional information, but I think to the point of today, we have provided you everything that you need.
Yes, we have. I agree, and I'm just asking for one additional peak, just the acoustics, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely.
A vacuum cleaner sitting, you know, 500 feet away from someone, you can hear that because it will be there, and for people that live on the site, they are gonna hear that. I just wanna know what the quantified number is.
And we can request that, for the equipment, that it's going to be in the battery cabinet and the equipment cabinet. What noise decibel level on average they produce?
Fair enough, that's all I...
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Fair enough. If you have one more question. Like I said...
Sir, could you come to the...
That tower height is gonna be reduced by almost, I think, 60 feet. So I'm not gonna be 127 feet away from that microphone on my property. I'm gonna want to be at an elevation of 60 feet. I've lived under a cell phone tower for 30 years. There are no EFs under the tower. The tower comes out as a cone. So here's the tower height, here's my property, that cone of radiation is gonna be substantial because of that grade height. I'm higher elevation than the tower. So the tower ain't gonna be 127 feet from me. It's gonna be much lower, which is a concern to me. But still 700-plus feet away. Correct, but the further I am away, under 1,000 feet, that scope is gonna go to me. And it'll dissipate. Yeah, yeah. And if I shelter myself, if I shield myself from their tower, what does that do to their There might be a legal issue on my property because if I have the EFF, if I have a high rate of radiation on my property, I'm gonna shield it. And that's gonna give them a little bit of coverage problem. I don't know what they wanna do about it, but I think that we gotta look at the elevation of that and see if that's gonna be a health problem, because if it is, I'm gonna shelter myself. I work for Raytheon, and that's what I built. I build EMPs, I build EMF cabinets that isolate that radiation. So it's gonna disrupt their signal if I am getting EMFs on my property, because I'm gonna be higher than that tower. I'm gonna be almost at an eye level with it. Are they gonna float the balloon?
We haven't discussed that yet. Were you there the day that we went on the site walk?
No.
Okay. I was encouraged by the fact that the trees were so tall and that as far as what will actually be showing above the trees would be, I don't know, what do you think? Like maybe 30 feet of the pole will be showing? Because there are some really tall pines right around it that will really...
Now, on my property, I only have one white pine that I can't see over. So that property was clear-cut by Ingles 35, 40 years ago.
Well, the property that this is going on is not clear-cut, so that was one of the desires.
No, but I am. So when they put that tower in there, I don't have a tree substantially enough to block them. And I've asked for some aesthetics, but it's a money issue. So we're gonna, we're probably all gonna see it, but if I'm in that scope, I'm gonna block it, and I can, which is something I don't wanna do. It's gonna get expensive. If that tower, I don't know what the elevation is. I haven't been able to find that because you haven't given a definitive elevation site of where you wanna put it.
We have.
Yes.
It's in the site plan.
Yeah, it's 460 or something, above sea level.
Correct, so that would be the ground level is, let me just give you the exact for the record, because we have it here in the drawings, 424.9. 424.9.
429?
429.9.
424.9.
Excuse me, 424.9, thank you. That is proposed ground elevation at the procenter of the tower and the 120-foot tower.
It'd be nice if you...
If you go on the town website, you'll see their entire application package, and it has this, it has everything, and it would give you that information.
Yeah, I tried to navigate that.
Yeah, it's not the greatest.
It's not easy.
Just keep looking for planning board. Just put planning board.
Yeah, well, I did find it. It's 200 pages long, and to try to get that print on a bigger screen, it's a little tough to see. And do they have, do they have any elevation site plans or anything on file with you other than, would you be able to get a paper copy if we needed it?
Everything's on the website. There is a message.
Okay, do they wanna make a comment, or we've already closed? Well...
I'm sorry.
And all the information for, sorry, on the website, sir. Does the person on Zoom wanna speak? She said that.
Yeah, but you can't get a D-drawing off the computer.
That's what we have to... So we did receive a comment on...
So we did receive a comment on the Zoom meeting after the public hearing was closed. It's up to your discretion whether you want to reopen it and allow, and I would, as a point of order too, the public hearing has closed. So if you want to reopen it to allow more comments, otherwise...
So is this person, did they just send a message or do they still want to speak?
They sent a message saying they weren't able to be here and just sent it in. I can't see the time.
7:02.
7:02.
I believe that's a neighbor network's late, so.
Well, if she's still there, I can open the public hearing again. Okay, I'll open the public hearing again at 7:05.
She says, unfortunately, I couldn't be there in person. I strongly oppose the cell phone tower that is proposed to go by the Sebago Lake State Park. It is going in a beautiful area and the need is not necessary. Cell phone service has greatly improved over the years. I used to get zero service when voting on Brady Pond in Sebago Lake. Not I have full service and no issues. There is little to no new data on 5G, et cetera. The FCC data is outdated, plus there are people living in the trailers that right next to the area on Wilderness Way.
Since I just reopened the hearing, does anybody else want to make another comment before I close it again? You do, okay.
Just to speak to the letter that you sent in after we had sent in our letter.
Your name, please?
Oh, Vanessa, sorry, I'm a butter. Are you saying that the planning board is not allowed to take in any health concerns when deciding on the tower approval or not?
For the Telecommunications Act of 1996, so long as the applicant provides evidence that it's meeting the FCC emission standards for radio frequency, no local planning board or zoning board across the country can take health effects into consideration when approving or disproving an application.
I guess that's all I have, I'm sorry.
So basically, I mean, so our ordinances do not let us supersede the FCC regulations as far as the emissions of these things? I would suggest if you would want to have tighter standards on that, that you write your Congresswoman and Senators in Washington because they're the ones that make those laws. That's far beyond us. I'm sorry, that's just the way that goes. Is there any other comments? Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, so at 7:07, I will close the public hearing again. I did have a question after some of the questions that folks had about why you were deciding to use diesel instead of propane to fuel the generator. I hadn't considered the potential of the diesel...
Environmental impact.
The spilling out. Not that we want propane to spill out either, but I just, I don't... If you had an explanation for that, that would be helpful.
I can't speak to the decision to use diesel over propane. What I can tell you is that Verizon's standard spec for their diesel generators is a double-wall generator with, and then if any fuel gets into the space in between the two walls, there's an automatic alarm that's triggered and someone knows that it's in the void, lack of better words, and then someone comes out and looks at it. So that's the protections we have with the diesel generator that's spec'd by Verizon.
Would you know what the capacity is going to be for the diesel that would be there? The storage of the diesel tanks? Typically 500.
500?
It's 283-gallon tank.
Okay.
And that is on Z11 of the drawings that were submitted. It would be detailed great on that page.
So where does that leave us? Guys, where do you, do you have other questions or...
Do we have any way to verify the FCC ruling that we can't supersede?
Do we have any way to verify that?
Third-party verification, legal counsel.
I guess we could, yeah, I guess we could ask our lawyers.
Yeah, legal counsel.
We can ask legal counsel. We do have some information from Maine Municipal Association, and I'll just read it. Certain municipal ordinance provisions regulating satellite dishes, wireless communication towers, and amateur radio towers have been preempted by federal statute and agency rules adopted by the FCC. So basically, most of the things that, the things that we've discussed tonight have been preempted by FCC. But we can certainly get additional legal opinion from the town attorney.
I don't know that that's necessary, but is there any question about their claim that this falls within FCC limits?
They've also submitted the permit as well from FCC in one of the tabs, if I'm correct. In the original submit, original submittal, I thought you had a letter included from the FCC?
FCC licenses were included, and we also included the emissions report. And we stated verbatim the language from the Telecommunications Act.
Okay, so we can't really question that?
No, I didn't have a question on that.
It's not, it's not up to us to say it's unhealthy for anybody, especially the landowner who has his own trailers on the property. That's his choice.
I would agree.
So if we're going to deny it, it would have to be on a different basis, I would assume. Is there anything they have not met?
I mean, we could go through the exercise of going through the conclusions of law.
I had a couple of questions based on what was talked about tonight, and one of them, I think we talked about at the site walk, but now my recollection, recollection isn't 100% clear when it came to the electrical. Let me back up. At the previous meeting, we did vote that the application was significantly, was complete. And we also granted waivers, and we also voted on the items that were deemed not applicable. But backing up on 908.7B of the ordinance, it talks about utilities being underground whenever, hold on, let me just get to the exact language. Electric telephone and other utility lines shall be installed underground. Any utility installations above ground shall be located to have harmonious relationship with the neighboring properties in sight. And I'm not 100% remembering how exactly the power was going to get to the actual tower. And the reason why I ask that question is, I'm not saying it should be one way or the other, but I am saying that if it is an above-ground, that that potentially is a waiver request, that's all. I think that's my only question coming from tonight's conversation.
Did you, didn't any of the representatives of the applicant wanted to address that about the power coming to the site?
So the sheets show an existing overhead utility line coming from the public right-of-way along Wilderness Way, and it'll be reused, the overhead utility line. And then I think if you look at Z7, I'm trying to come wrong, I can't, there would be a little spur stemming from the existing overhead utility lines to the project site. That is proposed to be also OHW, so overhead wires. You know, I can see why the town would want underground utilities in certain situations for new subdivisions, you have to look at them, but this is probably not one of those situations because it's not a residence, it's the utility infrastructure. So we hope you would see to not require underground utilities to that little spur tee-off from the existing utility lines to the project site.
So how far is that from the existing poles, the spur that you're talking about? Distance-wise? I can't find, I see the existing poles on Z7, I just don't see where the existing, I mean, where the additional spur would be that you're referring to. Regardless of the distance of it, is that something that we then would need to...
I'm just making sure we cross all our Ts and dot all of our Is. So it does say specifically in your ordinance that it needs to be underground, and I don't want to leave an open door for an issue if it isn't. Obviously, there's existing above-ground poles, so the only thing that they'd be adding would be the spur, but, or it's not, when you get to that point, it could be not applicable as well because the power's already there, right? They're not adding any additional power, they're just pulling off of that power.
Yeah, I don't believe any, you know, power poles would be visible from any other property anyway.
Right.
No, they would not.
That wouldn't really be an issue.
They're on the owner's property.
Right.
They're on the owner's property, for sure.
Thanks for bringing that up, though.
Do we need a request for a waiver on that?
Well, no, I mean, that was their point, just saying that since it's on the owner's property and it's already being pulled off of a pole, we could just say it's not applicable. I'm sorry, sir, you could, you'd have to come to the podium then.
I think the question he's going to ask is, is sufficient power? Are you going to be adding more lines, more poles to get the three phases that's necessary?
Oh, 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 okay, thank you.
The project does not need three phases.
Yeah, that's...
It does not need three nows. Is that your only question, Robert?
Well, Marty's concerned about the noise, but my guess is it's probably going to fall well below any standards we have, but you know, we can make that a condition of approval.
Oh, just to get the quantified data so we know what we're dealing with, that's all.
I wouldn't know how to, you know, what limit do we want it to be under? Do we have a guideline on that?
There's acoustic limits in the town. I don't think it is directly applicable. We'd have to use our own judgment at that point, I think. Will it affect the folks? Yep.
908.9A, under hazards and uses. Adequate provision shall be made to control noise, vibration, smoke, heat, glare, fumes, dust, toxic matter, orders, and electromagnetic interference generated by proposed uses or activities on the site. Here's the only standard that we have, such that these impacts shall not be readily detectable at any point along the lot lines so as to produce public nuisance or hazard. That's the only standard we have, and that's under your ordinance for the 908 criteria and standards.
So along the lot line, so the lot line being, that's a mess. It's all right, just leave it. So are you saying that you want this data before we even go through it? You're not prepared to make a decision on this until we have that data?
Correct.
Okay. So if we're at that point, how are we on dates as far as deadline and time on this particular application?
So in our ordinance, it would be from when it was voted complete, which the date for that was, hold on. Complete list was January 7, 2025, so we have 60 days from the date that it was voted complete. Which that was the only, only, if you only had a few items that you needed brought back, we could come back on the 18th, but the next meeting is March 4, which I guess is technically 60 days too, so March 4.
Well, we don't have to cut it that close. I mean, if they could bring it back by the 18th, if not...
February 18th is wide open right now at this point. March 4th is pretty action-packed already.
Well, so just to be clear now, just to make sure that we're not asking them for anything in addition to that, I just would like to know that this is the last thing that we're asking for then.
I just have one more question.
Yep, please.
I apologize for this, but I just want to make sure it's clear. As far as the occupied trailers that are on the subject parcel, there are, I believe, six or eight addresses that have been issued by the town, so there are residents living on that. Is there any FCC issues with the proximity to those trailers even though they're on the subject parcel? I think that's the direct question that we were kind of circling around, and I don't know the answer to that question. We know that you meet all the standards for distance with the abutting property owners, but is there anything specific to the occupied? They are not, they are permanent, they're not, some of them are permanent, some of them can be moved, I believe, and I'm 100% sure on that.
In short, now, these poles go on top of fire stations, go next to schools, go next to gas stations. They're all over the country, right? So because a trailer exists within 400 feet of it, 300 feet of it, there's, we meet the FCC regulations for emissions for these sorts of things.
And just to add, these are the same antennas that are on the top of buildings when you're in Boston or you're in any high-rise city that are, with their people living around it, and they meet the requirements that the FCC has mandated.
One of those microphones on the buildings on the strongest of the towers.
Sir.
Put the PIs up there.
Did you have another question?
I have one more thing, just because if you're going to make them come back again, I want to make sure we have everything. And the other thing that you guys discussed tonight is related to 908.3A, relation of proposed project to the environment. And that says, proposed structure shall be related harmoniously to the terrain and to the existing buildings in the vicinity. So my question is, are you going to ask them to do any more with the aesthetics or not? Or do you want them to do anything in that relation as was discussed tonight? If not, we need to let that go to rest so that they're not coming back to another meeting, either way. But are you going to pursue that at all? It's because right now I have noise was brought up, the aesthetics, and we already took care of the electrical conversation.
Can you be clear, by that, what exactly do you need for us to provide for the noise?
Thank you.
What data would you like us to present to you? For what equipment?
Decibel level from the cooling units from 100 feet.
Okay. And the generators, I would say when everything's running, on a hot day, if we lose power, those fans are going to be running, and the generator. So maximum decibel, maximum decibel of that whole operation would be.
Fair enough, we can have the data, you know, like, yes, we can ask for that data too.
Help me understand why you want to know the decibel level for 100 feet from the pole if the nearest property bounds?
I haven't been told what the nearest property resident is. I don't know, is it 200 feet, 100 feet? But I'm just using the metric of 100.
Okay, so Z1 on the site plan gives dimensions to the property bounds. The Kimball's other lot is the closest one, it's 225 feet away. And then State of Maine owns the next closest lot, 483 feet away. And Mr. Griffin owns the next closest lot, 715 feet away. And then I don't have a distance to Mr. Gartzu's lot, but it's greater than 715 feet. So I just want to be in a position where we can provide you with useful information. And I don't think 100 feet away from the facility would be that useful, given those distances and what Kathy read as your ordinance.
I'm looking for, okay, fair enough. So nearest residence, I guess, is my, would be the metric for me.
The residence meaning a trailer?
A trailer, that's right.
I would assume that these trailers that we're talking about are owned by Mr. Kimball, who wants you people to be on his land.
Correct, it's his land, he can choose what he wants on the property, correct.
I kind of...
I would say the...
It's an odd situation.
The distance to the nearest non-owned property, which would be, what, 400?
It would be the property line, which is what our ordinance dictates, is that it has to be even readily detectable. to be readily detectable, not readily detectable at any point along lot lines.
Not residence, it's lot lines, right.
So the closest lot line that's not owned by the Kimballs is 483 feet.
Eighty-three feet.
Owned by the State of Maine, and they're not here today. So I'm my option. So the next closest lot line would be 715 feet away, through a heavily dense forest.
Right, because, yes, the State of Maine lot line, that is all dense forest there.
So we, so we can provide the plans and specs, the decibel levels of the generator, and what do you want to call it, the fans inside the battery?
I would say a battery cabinet and the equipment cabinet.
Okay.
Yeah, just everything that makes noise.
Right. So I guess what I'm saying, I'm not exactly sure what that'll glean, but we can provide those plans and specs.
Yes, the lot line. Because I, this is an odd situation, but I mean, just because Mr. Kimball has these other trailers there, that's Mr. Kimball's business, and he doesn't seem to have a problem with it, he wants this thing on his property, so.
Right, I agree.
Now, we won't, people live there now, maybe they won't be, I don't know.
I sincerely doubt it's going to be an issue, but.
What?
I sincerely doubt it's going to be an issue.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted the data just to be complete.
And I don't have an issue with the aesthetics of the fence or whatever, I mean, we went to the site plan, we saw, we saw what the site looked like. I don't know that this is going to make it look worse.
So the only thing that you're asking for is the decibels at the closest lot line, that distance?
Will they provide sounding shields if it's loud?
Well, the closest lot line being the State of Maine's.
Right, there's no, there's no, but our.
Or the Kimball property.
Right.
Which, which property?
I would say State of Maine.
Well, Kimball's other property could be sold to somebody else, but that's, they buy it at that point in time, that's right, they know, fair enough.
It's their issue.
That's fair, that's fair enough.
But the closest other lot line is 483 feet, would be the State of Maine, that's the one. Because the other one is owned by the property owner. And so I made my comment about the aesthetics, do you guys have any other requirements of them aesthetically speaking?
No, to me, the generator isn't an issue because, like was mentioned, if the power's out, it's going to be a lot of generators running.
Right.
We all.
We all know what that's like.
We all hear that. So it's the fans, I guess, that would be the big deal, to me.
And when we get to the point about that spur, we're going to be fine to just say it's probably not applicable?
Right.
We're not going to be asked, we don't feel like a necessary.
It's not applicable to me.
Whatever, okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Anything else, Kathy?
I don't have anything else to know.
If I may. I know there was a question about a possible balloon float being done as far as like us being able to see the height. I don't know if they ever got to answer that question, I might have missed it, so my apologies if I did.
No, we didn't address it.
Did the sidewalk. We talked about potentially doing that at the sidewalk, and we determined not, that we weren't going to do it. And that's as far as we got on that. We had talked about a drone or a balloon. And then when we got on the site, I think we discussed it at the actual sidewalk, and when we got to the site and saw the tree height, we didn't pursue any further. That's my recollection.
Yeah, and having been out there, and actually, I just drove down State Park Road again the other day just to kind of visualize it, and I thought to myself, you literally have to be looking up, like, to even see it over the trees. I mean, certainly you'll be able to see it when you, when you look up, but it's because of the height of it, it's coming up right out of the middle of the trees there.
Yeah, it's going to be right out my window because of that elevation.
Do you guys recall that conversation about the balloons at the site?
I wasn't there.
Okay.
No, I don't recall this.
And the problem is just that we were kind of, everybody was in different groups, you know what I mean, when we were up there. So I don't, I don't recall if it was the whole group that talked about that.
I don't know what it would change.
I don't know either.
Yeah.
I don't think it would change anything. It's not required, in front of my concern.
So is it the consensus that you're not going to require it?
Yeah.
I can hear it, I can.
Yeah, okay, right. Okay. So again, just to recap, all we're looking for then is the decibel levels at the 483-foot mark.
So 483 at the State of Maine property?
Yes, yeah.
And I guess my next question is, is does the applicant have a preference as to which planning board meeting that they come back to?
So I'm just going to speak freely here, in, because there is no decibel requirement, we will provide whatever data we need to, but is there a way that you make it a condition of the application that it meets your zoning? Because it could be 300 decibels, it could be 10 decibels, there's no number we have to meet. We're going to provide whatever information we need to, but if we come, whatever number we provide, it becomes irrelevant in regards to it meeting it ordinance.
There's no, there's no number listed in there again?
Anything over 86 decibels considered a nuisance. Why isn't the generator going inside a building with the fuel so that we only hear a little bit of clapping of a muffle?
So the specific ordinance language is there's no decibel number, it says that shall not be readily detectable at any point along the lot lines to produce a public nuisance or hazard, pretty subjective, readily detectable.
An idling diesel truck or a bus is considered a nuisance.
So because we're just speaking hypothetically here, if the generator's running, then other generators are running. So how can you just consider our generator or Verizon's generator versus any other generator?
Because you have a large diesel generator.
Sir, I'm sorry, I did close the public hearing, we're not going to just throw out comments.
Well, it's not a comment, it's a fact. Your generator is twice as loud as anybody that's using a little old propane three-cylinder. If you get an eight-cylinder, it's going to crack.
Was there a decibel number that we had, I guess we couldn't use, I thought we had had a decimal, an actual decimal number in the solar, in the solar ordinance?
Ocean regulations.
In what ordinance, I'm sorry? In the solar ordinance, I thought we had like an actual decibel. But if we, with absent a town line, we could use a state one, no?
So it's really up to you guys what you want them to bring, whether you need that number before, and not require them to come back and have it conditional, but conditional on what, you know, that it meets state criteria? I don't know the answer to what that would be, and I understand the dilemma that they're in as well, is they don't know what they have to meet.
Did you have a number in mind?
Mine?
Yeah.
Any constant noise above 86 decibels causes hearing loss and is considered a nuisance. It's going to be mitigated by a sounding panel or some type of a shield. Typically, they put it inside a building.
When, so the noise that we're talking, the potential noise that we're talking about, so the generator, if the generator were running because there was a power outage, but then again, everyone else is running too, or when it just does its like five-minute exercise, weekly exercise thing. And the other, so that, those are intermittent, that's not a continuous thing, it's very once in a while. I mean, I don't even think a generator doing its cycle thing is even a concern. But the other thing is, is that a continuous, the fans, is that what we're talking about? The fans are continuous?
The fans that cool this equipment are in a case. And if you think about the fan on your computer or your laptop, when it starts to cool down, that's, that's what it is. I mean, those are the fans that you're, that are cooling. But I just looked up the Kohler 50 KW specs on Kohler's website, and the decibel rating is 61, is 61 decibels. That's a spec that you can look up.
From what distance, 10 feet?
That's at the machine.
At the machine, 10 feet, yeah.
Okay, so that's, no, that's at the machine. So again, we can provide you with whatever you need, but what I don't want to do is provide a number that prevents us from making decision. And if there's a way that it's something that is, that is.
A condition to the site plan approval that we meet some number or meet some criteria that's fixed, that we can know in advance?
But again, 61 decibels inside a compound in dense forest, 483 feet away, nobody's going to hear that.
That's for the generator.
That's the generator.
Okay, so we, so we don't know what the, what the cooling fans are? I mean, you looked that up really quickly, you can't.
I don't know, I don't know the expense.
Yeah, we don't know.
Verizon's equipment that they're putting in the cabinet, that's their equipment in the cabinet, but the generator is a 50 kilowatt Kohler generator. But I can tell you that it's not any louder than 61 decibels.
My professional opinion, I don't think this is going to be an issue. It's just due diligence, that's all this is all about, it's just due diligence.
And I don't disagree, we're going to provide, but what I'm trying to prevent is the continuance of this to push out a clock.
Oh, sure.
And if there's a condition that, that we can agree upon to meet, we're more than happy to do that.
So we can either tell him now, or make it, we could go through the entire thing, if, if you were, if the board was so inclined, we could go through the entire findings of fact, conclusions of law, and we could make it as a condition of approval that the, that the fans also do not exceed 61, 61 decibels at the property line.
That's right, that's fine.
Because we're saying here right now that we don't have an issue with 61 decibels at the unit, which is even, for the generator, which is, which at the property line would be even less, so.
It's due diligence, that's all.
And I understand that, I respect that, I'm just trying to.
So is that what the board wants, do you want, do you feel like we could make that a condition of approval, or we could just go through this now, and if?
That would be okay with me.
I agree with that.
Okay. So I'm going to do the draft conclusions, and as we ask each question, we'll, we'll comment or make, make reference to the supporting, supporting documents that we've received. Okay, so first one, the landscape will or will not be preserved in its natural state insofar as practicable by minimizing tree and soil removal, retaining existing vegetation when and where desirable, and keep any great change. Provided to us about that, the fact that there was not going to be excessive tree clearing, that there's going to be that pad with the fence, and that's, that's pretty much it. So would you say that the landscape will be preserved?
Yes, that was.
Any that we don't, that we say will not, it wouldn't go anyway. Okay. Landscaping and buffering will, will not, or is not applicable, be designed and installed to define, soften, or screen. Need to put pretty shrubbery around it, okay, is not applicable. The proposed structures will, will not, or is not applicable, are related harmoniously to the terrain and to existing buildings in the, so the structure. Hundred feet or so looks like a tree pole. Harmoniously to the terrain and the existing buildings. Well, I don't think you would ever have this relate, look like an existing building because it's a cell tower. And you're not going to put a cell tower in a field of cell towers, it's not like a windmill, right?
To the harmony, to the terrain, I don't know, that's a, that's a tough one.
You can accept, you can say it's not, and accept it for, that's what it's going to be.
Say that again?
It's not going to be harmoniously in that respect, it's not going to blend right in, it's going to stick out, people are going to see it. Now, the question becomes, is it acceptable?
Would say then, rather than say, well, no, I would just say it's not applicable because I don't think it's possible to make a cell tower completely harmonious to its terrain, and yet you can't, you can't have a law that says you. The proposed layout of access points will, will not, is not. As to avoid adverse impact on existing vehicular and pedestrian traffic patterns, I would say, the proposed layout, access points, will be designed, yeah, because it's just, it's not, it's the existing road, it's not, it's not creating a traffic thing, there's not going to be pedestrians. Okay, the layout and design of all means of vehicular and pedestrian circulation will, will not, is not applicable, be safe and convenient, it will, and we have also the fire chief, I don't know if that's on this part. Adequate provisions will, will not be made for surface drainage so that removal of surface waters will, will not adversely affect neighboring properties downstream conditions or public storm drainage systems. The site, we have documentation that shows that it will not change the flow of the water. So adequate provisions will be made. The site plan does or does not show provisions for utilities and public safety. It does, we just talked about that with the, on the existing pole and then the one spur. Is this where we need to make a comment about that spur?
I do not think so.
No, okay, all right.
I think it's later in your, your other conclusions.
Okay. All exterior lighting will or will not be designed to minimize adverse impact on neighboring properties and public ways. So yeah, there's minimal lighting.
Downward lighting.
So it's, what there is there is downward, so it will be designed. Adequate provisions will, will not be made to control noise, vibration, smoke, heat, glare, fumes, dust, toxic matter, odors, and electromagnetic interference. So this is significant, but we have all the documentation on the, the emissions, there are no odors or toxic matter or dust or fumes. And the noise we just talked about, that was, as a condition of approval, is going to be no greater than 61 decibels at the property line. So we'll make that note when we get to the conditions of approval. So in that case, it would be adequate, will be made. Advertising features will, will not, is not applicable to track from the design proposed building and structures. I would say that's not applicable, right? There's no advertising features.
Right.
The proposed development will, will not adhere, is not applicable to the sign standards outlined in the ordinance. I think there was just going to be one small little sign on the fence, that's the documentation, right, with the emergency information, so I would say it is, development will. Okay. So let's go through the conditions of approval, so that, so then we would say, so, okay, so we've all come, we've all agreed on all of these items, so a draft motion that was prepared here is to conditionally approve the application from Tarpon Towers 3 LLC and Verizon to construct and operate a 120-foot wireless telecommunications facility and associate improvements on land owned by Scott and Kendrick Kimball at 26 Wilderness Way, map lot 007045, in the rural zoning district, subject to the following conditions of approval. So then there's the standard approvals that we usually do for everything. One, A, this approval is limited to development only as described and shown on the plans and documents presented. B, the project must comply at all times with all applicable federal, state, and local approvals to which it is subject. C, copies of all required state or federal permits and/or letters of approval shall be submitted to the Naples Code Enforcement Office prior to the issuance of building permits for the project. D, any required stormwater and phosphorus controls shown on the site plan must be inspected by a. by a licensed engineer or other certified individual. Assigned statement that the controls were installed as presented in the plans is to be provided to the Naples CEO prior to the building being placed in service. E, for any subsequent amendments to a previously approved site plan, all previous conditions of approval shall remain in force unless explicitly changed by the planning board. Now, to, two, these are the project-specific conditions of approval. Um, the project requires a height variance from the Naples Board of Appeals. The application will be placed on the next available agenda. No, no building permits will be issued unless and until the Board of Appeals approves the required variance. So that's in there. Um, sorry, I lost the rest of my Can I use yours or the good ones? Oh, the double printing. Um, B, no additional clearing of existing trees or vegetation is allowed beyond the required for the installation of the tower compound. C, the project is required to be equipped with an approved NRPA alarm system to be reviewed and approved by the fire department prior to issuance of the building permit. D, a knock box is to be installed per nine oh eight B seven C in a location approved by the Naples Fire Chief prior to the tower being operational. E, all roads depicted on this plan are to remain private. F, the owner operators are responsible for maintaining the access on Wilderness Way up to the tower location and the emergency turnaround, including seasonal grading, new surface gravel is needed, and winter maintenance. G, no building permits are to be issued by the town CEO until the town receive it, receives a decommissioning bond, and I think this amount is incorrect. We had the higher amount that had the inflation factor in it.
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand.
It's thirty-two thousand, was that what it was? Okay, so this needs to be thirty-two thousand. Is this where we would might also put, um, I had brought this up at the last time we had this up before us, that, this doesn't mean that the town's responsible for it, it's just the town's holding the money, right? Um, it doesn't mean that I guess, and I'm thinking, you know what I'm, and it goes back to that other item that had come up to the select board where money had been held for, in an old subdivision to do something that, but yet it costs a lot more to do it now.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. Keep going and I'll try to, I'll try to wordsmith it.
Okay, H, any change in ownership, operators, or leases of the town tower facility or additional equipment, apparatus, or antenna, antenna will require planning board approval and any applicable building permits. Changes to the approved plan, including emissions, must meet the applicable local, state, and federal standards as the time of application of the site plan amendment. I, in the event of an amendment to the original plan, the planning board deserves the right to reconsider the amount of the decommissioning bond. And then we'd be adding J now, related to the decibel levels.
I have drafted something and see if this works for you.
Okay.
This approval is contingent upon the applicant providing documentation that the fans and any other equipment that produces noise be less than sixty-one decibels at the closest property line.
It would not be, I know what you're gonna say, not the closest property line because that's the Kimball property, it would be at the
The, at the
State park.
State park.
State park property line.
Four hundred and eighty-three feet.
Property value. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna say, see Kathy's.
And then is it, is that recorded on review for the town manager on the decommission escrow amount? Is that?
Did, was that not already? It was the question, I'm sorry.
Isn't there supposed to be like a review, a five-year review on the deca, on the escrow amount for the decommission plan, or the bond for the decommissioning?
I think there is on solar farms, but I don't know about cell towers.
If I recall, we discussed that at the last meeting.
Yes.
And we did not set it, say that it would have to be every five years, but that if a new, uh, cellphone company came in at that time, that, that's why, I think that's why I put reserve the right to reevaluate the decommissioning bond.
Oh, with the times where additional carriers are put on the poll, we can
There's come on, yeah, and then you can take, you can take a look at inflation, take a look at if it's gonna cost more because you have more apparatus. There's one thing that I think we forgot that was discussed that I just thought of, and that was that the, they're required to remove any equipment that is not operational.
Yep.
So that's in
K, I mean, K?
Or, I'm, yeah, K.
K.
Yeah, K.
Are you writing something?
Yeah, I'm working on it. Yes, the owner operator is required to remove any equipment that is no longer operational. When, I guess, is the question?
After a, no, no longer operational after a, what, uh, one-year period? Six-year, six-month period? I don't
What is, is there any industry standard, I guess, is my question. What they're concerned about is that there's been other towers in the past that they put equipment up, and then it doesn't work anymore, it's not being used, and it just sits up there and is there, so it makes it more of a, not, less attractive, if you will. Is there any industry standard or anything that you're aware of that has happened before in the past? It was something that was discussed at a previous meeting, I don't think we ever got the answer for that.
I don't know, I just
Well, let's just say a year.
A year, okay.
I would just say a year. I mean, that's plenty of time for someone to get their act together and get rid of
Any, any equipment or apparatus that is not operational. So the owner operating, the owner or operator is required to, the operator, the owner's not gonna be removing anything, the operator is required to remove, uh, any equipment that is not operational, uh, within one year.
It's not operational. Here. Um, we go then back to the thing about the G.
G.
Where the town is, is holding the decommissioning bond. Is that, so, can we see the decommissioning bond in the amount of thirty-two thousand?
Yeah. The self, uh, the tower owner, maybe we start the G with the tower owner is responsible for decommissioning. Uh, no building permits are gonna issue, uh, in the event that, in the event that there is, the owner operator is no longer, or the operator's no longer in business, the town, uh, is to receive a decommissioning bond in the amount of thirty-two thousand. No building permits will be issued until that bond is received.
Say that again?
I didn't write it all down. The operator, the owner or operator of the tower is responsible to decommission the telecommunications facility. In the event that, uh, in the event that the owner operator is no longer in business, the town will receive a decommissioning bond in the amount of thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, but we get the bond regardless.
Right, right, that's true.
Because no building permits, I think maybe we just keep it this way, but then add a second, add to the fact.
Add another one, add to the end. The owner operator is responsible for decommissioning.
Yeah.
How about that? Just keep it simple.
So it's still as part of G, but just a separate
Yeah.
Sentence.
Sounds good.
Okay. Now I lost the This doesn't work with the printing on two sides, what the heck? Oh, okay.
Kathy?
Yes?
Um, just on the renewable bond, just wanna make sure you have the exact amount that's in the letter that was given, that was provided.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Oh, thank you.
That's a hundred and twenty-five percent of the total. And this was the document that was provided to the town
Thank you.
From Newberry Generator.
Yeah, and that was based off of the existing solar ordinance, and that's where we got that number from. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so that was a, that was a motion through all of that.
Yes, I'll second that.
So first of all, we agree, we, we, let's just take a vote on all the draft conclusions of law that we went, the will will not, and all of that. So do you want to make a motion that we accept all of those?
Make a motion, we accept the conditions of fact.
Conclusions of law?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Second?
All in favor?
Excuse me, are they not required for environmental report?
I believe the applicant addressed that earlier, that they are required to have a permit, and that's one of the permits that's required to be prior to the
Building permit.
Issuance of building permits. And I, I did not hear the, the actual permit name, if he wants to repeat it. Um, you, you had mentioned it earlier, I could not hear it.
It's called NEPA, the National, am I wrong, Paulson?
Yeah, the NEPA permit.
Should that be on?
It is, because that's under the standard conditions of approval, it says that all state, federal permits need to be received before a building permit can be issued.
And my understanding is they can't get that permit until they have this approval, is that, that you can submit the final plan
We have to know where it's gonna be before we
Before you can submit for that. Um, and don't forget you have some findings of fact on page five that were listed before the draft conclusions of law.
These are, we did these last time, didn't we?
You voted on, um, uh, but you did not go through the actual findings of fact. You voted on, you voted on completeness, you voted on waivers, and you voted which ones were, um, not applicable.
Right.
But there's some additional
For these four?
Yeah.
These are new? Okay.
They're not new, it's just, it's just a kind of documenting what you did.
Okay.
Okay.
So, should you want us to read, you want me to read these all, or just make a
Oh, it's come to my attention that referring to them at a planner's memo is not adequate legally.
Okay.
So I would read those.
Once upon a time, we used to do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this was from findings of fact. Um, one, at the January seventh, twenty-twenty-five planning board meeting, the planning board voted five-zero to grant the following waivers from the submit, required submittals. Sorry, I'm a lot of reading tonight. Um, nine oh seven one B two, perimeter survey of parcel made and certified by a registered land surveyor. Nine oh seven one A eleven, soil erosion control plan approved by the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District. Nine oh seven one B seven, onsite soil and investigative report by an OHS licensed site evaluator. Two, the board finds that the granting of waivers from the submittal requirements meets the waiver criteria found in nine oh five one A through D. A being there will be no adverse effects from the neighborhood or the site. B, that the purpose of the site plan review continue to be met. C, that the scale or nature of the project is of a size that makes this information unnecessary. And D, there are special circumstances of the site that may compliance with the specific application requirements or standards, and unnecessary burden on the applicant as long as such a waiver will not adversely affect the abutting landowners and general health, safety, and welfare of the town. Three, with the granting of the waivers and the list of submissions deemed not applicable to the project, the planning board voted five to zero that the application was complete at January seventh, twenty-twenty-five, planning board meeting. And four, the planning board finds that the application meets the criteria and standards found in nine oh eight, one through eleven. So, we vote on these again, or no? We vote to accept these?
You should vote on it because at the meeting that you granted the waivers, you did not specifically list the criteria in nine five one A through D, that it met the criteria for granting waivers.
Okay, I'll take a motion that we, uh, that these were their findings of fact based on section nine oh eight and nine oh seven.
Okay, so move.
Second.
All in favor? And, uh, now I've lost track, did we just already vote on draft conclusions? We did accept those, right? Okay, we did. So now, going back to the, to the draft motion that I read earlier, and that we went through all those conditions of approval. Uh, take a, I guess I made, I made that motion because I read it, and we, and I
I would ask for a motion.
And I, make a, a motion to accept this, um, draft motion that I made with all of the conditions of approval that are now A through K in section two, have the standard conditions of approval, one, A through E, and then the project-specific conditions of approval, A through K.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Okay.
All, any discussion, any further discussion on this project, then? All in favor?
On the project, yes.
Yes. Okay. I think we're done. All right, I had it on the agenda here somewhere. Other planning board business, uh, planning board meeting schedule, February eighteenth is going to be a workshop, it looks like.
Yeah.
And you had, and then the fourth, we're going to have a regular meeting with, looks like already three items of sketch plan review.
There's already three items scheduled for March fourth, and another date, just to be aware of, is that we have scheduled the variance for the height on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, for the Board of Appeals. There's the possibility of another application, but I'm not sure yet, so we'll leave it at that.
Did you want comments from us on things we should be discussing at the, at the workshop?
I would love to have some topics, because I could make a list, but I wanna know what you guys are more concerned about than me.
So I just had, had a few items that I jotted down, and what I, my thoughts were that maybe we take a look at the MMA Planning Board Manual and compare it to the way we actually do things, and there were a couple of points in particular, um, that maybe we would look at, I mean, certainly in, in the aggregate, we can look at everything, but just some technical things on, um, site visits, um, alternate, alternate members, the closing of the record, which they talk about on page twenty-seven, um, taking public comment outside of public hearings.
Yeah.
Um, hiring our own, um, engineer, I don't know if we wanna have someone on retainer or have a fee-based situation. Um, also on how we take minutes, do we wanna list who's absent? MMA suggests we actually list who's absent, and it, uh
So MMA manual.
Yeah, just, just kind of looking at the, the planning board stuff and the MMA, and comparing it to our things, and then also in our own planning board procedures, we refer to everything as a public hearing, and we have to have some conversation about that because everything's not necessarily a public hearing, and MMA doesn't refer to everything as a public hearing. They make a clear distinction between what a public hearing is and a regular meeting, so.
I think, uh, and that's why on the, on the agenda tonight, I specifically put public hearing.
Yeah.
Because if it's not a public hearing, it's not a public hearing.
Right.
Um, you still have the, the ability to receive some comment, but I think that's definitely an area that we need to work on, is the public hearings and what constitutes a public hearing.
Because you then, within a regular meeting, you open the public hearing, you close the public hearing, because you're making a conscious decision not to take any more information, so.
Exactly.
So those are just my thoughts, so, you know.
That makes sense.
If anybody else has, if anybody else has anything, I'll give you a week, and then I have to post the agenda, so, um, if you wanna email me other topics, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. So I won't be here on the fourth.
Okay.
But I'll be here on the eighteenth, I believe.
Awesome.
Kathy, um, for the, do you do the ZBA as well? Do you make
I am doing ZBA as well.
So, is he, yeah, I, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, sorry. Uh, so for the ZBA, is that going to be a public hearing, official public hearing?
Yes, it's a one-stop, you're not gonna have to come back twice.
As it's been notified, that it's a public hearing.
Yes, yes, we've done all the notifications.
Okay.
Correct.
I just, you brought that point up from the last, I just wanna make sure, for the ZBA.
Yeah.
It's a different, it's a different procedure.
Okay.
The planning board gets to set the public, if they're hearing, if they want one, for ZBA, it is a public hearing.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Excuse me, the planning board, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
And I did wanna reiterate a fact from the National Association of Realtors, my property value is lowered by twenty-eight percent, and that's a fact, and that is a statistic, so you could look that up, but it hurts when something reduces your property by that much. So that's a fact, that's not a hearsay. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, thank you for coming. I think we had a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes, okay. Done, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, everybody.